Good afternoon and welcome. Hafaday, the Committee on Health, Land Justice and Culture is now called to order. This is Monday, October 28, 2024, and the time is 2:07 in the afternoon. With regards to public notice and compliance with the open government law, notices for this public hearing were published in the Guam Daily Post and on the Government of Guam Public Notice Portal on Monday, October 21, 2024, to meet the five-day notice requirement, and on Friday, October 25, 2024, to meet the 48-hour notice. Notices were also sent by email to all senators and main media broadcasting outlets. This is a hearing being livestream on the Guam Legislature's YouTube channel. General rules of conduct: Individuals testifying shall first be recognized by the chair before speaking and begin by stating their name for record-keeping purposes. In an effort to minimize distractions while someone is testifying, the committee asks that those present please be quiet and refrain from moving around the public hearing room. Additionally, we have asked protocol to keep the doors quiet. Individuals providing oral testimony are invited to submit written testimony afterwards to ensure accuracy of the transcriptions. After testifying, panelists will only be allowed to speak again in direct response to questioning or invitation of a senator who has the floor or at the discretion of the committee chair. After all have testified, senators will be recognized for five minutes for questioning of the panel or comments on the bill and shall not interrupt any other senators or any other person testifying. The hearing is to collect testimony, not to debate or engage in back-and-forth arguments with the participants; berating of any of the witnesses will not be allowed. If you ask a question, allow them to answer. On our item for the agenda today is Bill Number 363-37COR, was introduced by Speaker Therese Turlahee, an act to amend Section 63506(c) of Article 5, Chapter 63, Title V, Guam Code Annotated, relative to the memorandums of agreement under the Guam Forest System Plan and to adopt the Guam Forest System Plan attached heretofu as exhibit in accordance with the provisions of Article 5, Chapter 63, Title V, Guam Code Annotated, the Guam Forestry Legacy Act. I'd like to acknowledge my colleagues Senator Telo Tydegui, who's here with me this afternoon. Thank you very much for joining our committee. Of course, you're also a committee member, and I would like to thank all of you that are here to participate or testify, that are joining us today to provide testimony. With regards to the bill, the Guam Forestry Legacy Act of 2012 established a framework for the protection, conservation and management of Guam's natural resources and natural habitats or ecosystems, open spaces and historic artifacts, and land for outdoor recreation and education. The act recognizes the responsibility of the Government of Guam to allow the Department of Agriculture to meet its mandated mission and to allow the conservation and protection of these resources. The act also mandates the Department of Agriculture to coordinate with the Guam Department of Land Management to identify land belonging to the government and land reserved for the use by the Department of Agriculture, and to determine land that has a compatible use for the Guam Forest System to be included in an inventory. The act does a number of things, including naming Department of Agriculture as the enforcement authority for the forest system, authorizing the identification of and inventory of the lands for the system, placing jurisdiction of the inventory under the Department of Agriculture, authorizing a memorandum of agreement with DPR for land in the DPR inventory, and authorizing the lease of property in the system plan inventory. With regards to some of the highlights, I'm just going to highlight a few of these points that the speaker has provided. In accordance with the enabling statute, the forestry has to consist of the following: An inventory of land to include the number, size and location of the proposed potential use in the system. A comprehensive and concise definition of public interests in the system. Proposals for the maintenance and enhancement of the overall quality of the system environment. Stipulations for public access for recreational and educational use. And proposals for land use to include elements but not limited to: Education for the purpose of conservation, preservation, environmental sciences and related curriculum; scientific research; Training for agriculture-related personnel and those involved in natural resource fields and disciplines of relative activities; Recreation and the conservation and preservation. And has a number of other points, but I will move on with regards to the presentation this morning. Bill 363-37COR seeks to adopt the Guam Forest System Plan proposed by the Department of Agriculture, which will then be allowed by the adoption of the rules and regulations within 90 days of adoption as mandated in Section 63505 of the statute. While the Guam Forest System Plan is a comprehensive, and Department of Agriculture has the expertise to maximize its resources, access grants and other funding to push this program through, there are areas of substantial concern that require further clarification, particularly regarding the jurisdiction of certain property and the process for leasing them. Jurisdiction and property management: The total acreage of property proposed for the Guam Forest System Plan is 11,230.764 acres. The bill introduces jurisdictional questions regarding the transfer of land to the Department of Agriculture from other agencies such as the Department of Parks and Recreation and the Tremor Land Trust Commission. Additionally, there are concerns about whether existing leases on lands identified in the plan will be impacted by the jurisdictional transfer, such as the commercial lease of Pedro C. Santos Memorial Park. Leasing process: Additionally, the Forest System Plan outlines the leasing of land for purposes such as recreation, education, but it is unclear if there will be a competitive process for awarding leases. It raises questions about how fair competition will be ensured, especially when commercial interests are involved. Some notable lots included in the proposed inventory include 1,700 acres at Northwest Field, Fadien Point Lot Number 5412, 25 acres, Mangilo, subject lot of the Hawaiian Rock Proposal and Bill Number 16-37, the Guam Territorial Seashore Park, Kokus Island Area Number 29, 21.7 acres, the Moleso Pedro C. Santos Memorial Park, Lot 262, 6.4 acres in Piti also, the Dedido Buffer Strip Block 16A, Lot 1 and L2, Block 9A, L2 and LR2, Block 32A and Block 31A, 20 acres in Dedido, and the Governor Joseph F. Flores Park or Epa Beach Park. It is the committee's intent to ensure that jurisdictional language is clear and remains with the intent and in spirit of the law without infringing on the jurisdiction of lands under control of other agencies, particular the CLTC, the GALC, the DVA, the GWA, DOE and DCA. Before we move on testimony, I would like to note that the administrative adjudication timelines for the Guam Forest System Plan is as follows: The plan was submitted on Monday, September 23, 2024. In accordance with the AAL, the deadline for the public hearing is Tuesday, December 3, 2024. The legislature, by passage of this bill into law, to approve, disapprove or amend any rule within 90 calendar days from the date of filing with the Speaker of La Hesitura, the deadline is Wednesday, December 18, 2024. For the record, the committee has requested feedback on Bill Number 363-37COR from the following: The Department of Agriculture, BSP, DLM, DPR, DPW, MCOG, CLTC, GLAC, GWA, GDOE, DVADCA, the Guam Preservation Trust and the Guam Energy Office. Many of these agencies have lands listed in the proposed inventory. As for legal review, legal review was requested on Monday, October 21, 2024. Legal review is pending. Fiscal note: BBMR notes that based on the comments from the Department of Agriculture, there will be no economic impact for the adoption of Bill Number 363-37COR. Any potential fiscal impact would be the result of an implementation of new rules, regulations and fees for specific segments of the conservation industry as outlined in the act. Furthermore, additional resources such as manpower, equipment and supplies may be necessary to enforce new mandates brought about from the act. However, these issues are not specifically addressed in the legislation. And with regards to testimony that we have today, I have our mayor from the village of Piti, Jesse Alec, if you can come forward. I also have Christine Ferheran, Christian Benitez, Matt Santos and Reagan Boa from the Department of Agriculture. You're pleased, you're welcome to please come forth and have a seat. And Mayor Alec, we'll begin with your testimony. Just again officially state for the record your name, and then you can certainly welcome to proceed with your testimony.
Good afternoon, Jesse Alec, the president of the Mayor's Council of Guam and the mayor of Piti. Senators, I don't have a prepared testimony, but I wanted to appear to let you know that as a whole, the Mayor's Council is in support of the bill, of the plan, simply because we should be good stewards of the land. And it is a good thing to have these regulations and these safeguards in place for everyone to abide by. And so that's the simple testimony from the Mayor's Council of Guam. As the mayor of Piti, I do want to chime in on the use of Santos Park because it is a park that is used almost daily by our residents. And so we currently have an agreement with the UOG Island Wisdom Committee to use a portion of that property for seafaring for their canoe house. And that was in agreement with our Minas O'Planning Council. And I want to express this, or share this experience as a reason to ensure that this plan, although it is to safeguard our land, that the authorities, whether it be agriculture, EPA or whomever, work with the mayors and the individual villages to ensure that the property is used amicably and not one-sided. And there should be no partial use of that property. It should be for the good of the people of Guam first and foremost, and then, of course, to follow the regulations. So for whatever it was, we, the PD MPC, agreed to have the UOG Island Wisdom Committee have their sea canoe house there at Santos Park. Because, one, it would be educational, and it would allow our residents in Piti to be a part of that process. There were issues, whatever they were, they ironed their issues out with the government agencies that seemingly had control over some of their permitting issues. And that was one of the understanding that we had with UOG was that whatever permitting was necessary, they had to get on their own. Their issues became elevated, or went, were elevated to add a loop for, again, whatever reason. Ultimately, they were resolved. And we don't, when I see that at Santos Park, I can imagine what's going to happen in the other parks as well, in the other villages, especially those parks that were now have, they have contracts or agreements between DPR and the mayor's offices. So I'm talking about, well, the various parks, right, around the island. And so you know that because it was in the news. And so I see some of that listed in the plan. And so I'd be very careful, and I would like to make sure that because this, when this plan is adopted, and if this plan is adopted, that these agencies really work truly with the mayor's office because most of us know how that park is used and what it's being used for. And typically, it's really for the residents, for the people of Guam to enjoy. And so that's really all I have to say about it. And I do want to thank the committee for informing us of this bill. Otherwise, I probably would not have seen it, and I would not have informed my colleagues. They are aware of the bill, and they are aware that their villages are noted in this, in the plan, in the appendix that's noted. So hopefully, they will submit in testimony as well. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mayor Alec. Are you going to be able to stay for the hearing, or do you have to step out?
I have a 3:30, so I'll stay until that time.
Appreciate it. Thank you, and thank you for taking the time to come out and express your position as well as that of your fellow mayors with regards to this bill. We'll extend the courtesy to the, I understand the deputy for Department of Agriculture is here representing the Department of Agriculture, as your director was unable to, because of another committee may attend, so if our planning would not mind, I'll allow Mr. Roy Gimboa, the deputy director, who's here to speak on behalf of Department of Agriculture, if you can proceed with your testimony.
Yes, ma'am. Senators, thank you very much for the opportunity and allowing me to go in front of the BSP. We did submit written testimony. We provided copies to the speaker's office, and it was also emailed by our secretary. As you stated, my name is Roy Gimboa, the deputy director for the Guam Department of Agriculture. The letter that we submitted is what I will go ahead and read here to you all. It is addressed to the Speaker, Therese M. Turlahee, the chairperson on the Committee on Health, Land Justice and Culture, and it reads as such: "Hafaday Speaker Turlahee, thank you for the opportunity to provide written testimony in full support of Bill Number 363-37COR, an act to amend subsection 63506(c) of Article 5, Chapter 63, Title V, Guam Code Annotated, relative to memorandums of agreement under the Guam Forest System Plan, and to adopt the Guam Forest System Plan attached heretofu as exhibit A in accordance with the provisions of Article 5, Chapter 63, Title V, Guam Code Annotated, the Guam Forestry Legacy Act. Your Guam Department of Agriculture fully supports the bill, which augments the Guam Department of Agriculture's mandated responsibility. The Guam Forest Legacy Act of 2012 mandated the Guam Forest System Plan to be developed, which would assist the Guam Department of Agriculture in its mission by providing a Guam Forest System Plan to bring the Guam Department of Agriculture and all partners and stakeholders to the table to create an inventory of land that would help in coordinating efforts to leverage these resources and determine the best compatible uses within the Guam Forest System Plan. The goal of the Guam Forest System is to sustainably manage these areas to facilitate the conservation of natural resources and critical habitats or ecosystems; safe recreational use, support education, preservation and protection of traditional uses; historic and cultural resources, and strengthen the economy through direct means such as sustainable provision of commercially valuable timber and through indirect benefits, including water quality protection, flood abatement, erosion control and ecotourism opportunities. The importance of the Guam Forest System Plan with respect to the intent of the Guam Forest Legacy Act cannot come at a more critical time when so much agricultural land is being rezoned for development. Department of Agriculture reviews and approves clearing, grading and building permits. Based on permit applications reviewed in fiscal year '24, 1,221 acres of land was cleared for development. With this amount of clearing occurring, Department of Agriculture is concerned that there will be lands unavailable for conservation to protect Guam's native species or to reintroduce/release native species back onto Guam. An agricultural land assessment is needed to ensure that enough space, enough has been protected for our people. For sustained livelihoods, sustainable food production, clean water, both fresh and marine, climate resiliency, diverse forests, natural resources protection and conservation management efforts for a greener, stronger and more diverse Guam. The Department of Agriculture understands the intent of Bill Number 363-37COR and fully supports this proposal. The proposed act to amend subsection 63506(c) of Article 5, Chapter 63, Title V, Guam Code Annotated, relative to memorandums of agreement under the Guam Forest System Plan and to adopt the Guam Forest System Plan attached heretofu as exhibit A in accordance with the provisions of Article 5, Chapter 63, Title V, Guam Code Annotated, the Guam Forestry Legacy Act." And that is the letter that was submitted by our director to the speaker, and I too would also like to just give my total support for this bill as well. Thank you very much for the time.
Thank you very much, Deputy Director Gimboa, and then we'll have Department of Bureau of Planning and Statistics, who would like to go first, Christian Benitez or Mr. Matt Santos? Which one of you will be providing testimony on behalf of BSP, and then we'll open it up to questions and comments after.
Yeah, Christian's here to support on some of the more detailed questions. I'll read the testimony for our agency.
Okay, then proceed. Just again, just restate your name for the record.
I'm Matthew Santos. I'm the deputy director of the Bureau of Statistics and Plans. So begin. Yeah, okay. The Bureau of Statistics and Plans is pleased to provide written, or testimony in strong support of Bill Number 363-37. Pursuant to BSP's authorities under 5GCA, Chapter 1, Article 2, centralized planning and the implementation of the coastal, Guam Coastal Management Program enforceable policies in accordance with Executive Order 78-37, BSP has closely collaborated with the Department of Agriculture in the development of the Guam Forest System Plan. This is to ensure that the plan is in compliance and in accordance with the Guam Forest Legacy Act and that the implementation of the plan shall be in harmony and consistent with all comprehensive planning activities on Guam. BSP recognizes the critical importance of the Guam Forest System Plan and this legislation to formalize the commitment of the Government of Guam to effectively manage, preserve and sustain our land and natural resources for the optimal future for the people of Guam. Specifically, BSP supports the following key provision of Bill Number 363-37, Amendment 2, 63506(c). The proposed amendment to 63506(c) will strengthen the legal framework for implementing the Guam Forest System Plan by requiring the memorandums of agreements are established between the relevant government agencies and not limited to those agencies listed in order to allow for expanding greater collaboration required with other agencies such as BSP. This will help to ensure that all relevant stakeholders are engaged to work towards a common goal and a common good. Adoption of the Guam Forest System Plan: The adoption of the Guam Forest Plan as an official planning document of the Government of Guam will provide for greater legal authority and enforcement. This will allow for the Government of Guam to leverage the resources within the Guam Forest System and to build capacity to conduct projects and programmatic activities to implement the plan's provisions and to promulgate and enforce and regulate regulations pursuant to 63505, promulgation of rules and regulations, and 63510, protection of the Guam Forest System Plan. The Bureau of Statistics and Plans is committed to continuing the partnership with the Department of Agriculture and collaboration with all levels of government, the private sector and the entire community in Guam in realizing, in the realization of the Guam Forest System Plan. We extend our sincere appreciation to you and your staff for your assistance in the development of the Guam Forest System Plan and for introducing this important legislation and support of the plan. That's our testimony.
Thank you very much for providing your testimony. I'm going to start. Senator Telo, do you have any questions or comments? Because I know Speaker Turlahee has a whole list of questions, so I'll extend the courtesy for you to go first. She has a lot of questions, so I'm going to start. I'm going to start with Department of Agriculture.
They'll probably answer my questions anyways, and I don't want to lose the rhythm here.
No worries, but she does have a list, quite a list of questions. Is it your, just for Department of Agriculture, does your understanding that all property listed in this inventory remain with the existing agency?
Yes. So the current, the current ownership of the land?
Yes, just for the record, I know Ms. Ferheran, just introduce yourself for the record.
Christine Comacho-Ferheran, Forestry and Soil Resources Division Chief for the Guam Department of Agriculture. Is it better without the name?
We can hear you, yeah, thank you. And your responses, yeah.
Yes.
Okay. The next question we have is, what is your intent for lands currently under the jurisdiction of other agencies other than DPR to include the CLTC or the GALC?
Coordinate and collaborate for any potential projects. Nothing will take place on the properties without the key partners at that table, and it would always start with the landowners and the agencies and our mayors.
Okay, I'm sure they'll be happy to hear that. How would jurisdiction of the properties listed in the inventory be determined moving forward if this plan should be approved?
How will they be inventoried?
How would the jurisdiction of the properties be listed in the inventory?
Oh, shared, like a joint administrative roles? So do we have another? I'm going to, go ahead, go ahead.
So of course, the primary, the primary landowner will remain within that, will remain with the initial owner of the property itself. So if currently a property, for instance, is belonging or titled to Department of Parks and Recreation, they will still be the head of that, they will still have the title of that property. It's not the intent to change ownership or change title of that property. It's more or less, as Forest System Plan is more of a managerial and administrative plan to ensure that any activities that take place, anything, any activities that take place on these properties, it could be agricultural land, Department of Parks and Parks land, it could be mayoral lands, Tremor Land Trust, they will still be the primary owners, title holders of the property itself.
Okay, I appreciate that clarification. Why were some of the properties removed from the plan since the last draft as of March 2022? Are you aware of properties that may have been removed from the draft of this plan?
From the March version?
Yes, the March 2022 version.
That has been, that's the only copy I've been working with, and to my knowledge, nothing was officially removed from the inventory. Christian, are you aware of anything?
No, I'm not aware of any changes since March.
Okay, so as far as you're concerned at this point, the list remains the same as of March 2022?
Yes.
Our next question is, why do some of the property listings state the word "part" in it? How will the parts be determined?
That might have been a rough, just a reference point. So, let's see. Can I see, do you see an example of one that had come to your attention?
Well, according to what the speaker has here, I guess there's, some of them had the listed word "part," P-A-R-T. I don't know if it's a portion of the property.
Could that be, I am, my apologies, I'm just going to punt over to BSP because my question, to clarify that question, is certain land holdings that have local place names?
Okay.
Maybe there's...
No, it's for part, it's for a portion, it's for a portion of the property.
So it means only a portion of the property is going to be identified or used? Okay, we just needed clarification. DLM advised at the mini-summit that jurisdiction for property would only be recognized if the property is registered. Are there any properties in the inventory that are not registered? And she references page 126 of the Complete Forest System.
I think Cotal, Cotal Conservation Reserve.
Okay.
I think parts of Cotal are not registered. And the administrative authority for that area, and this is the Tarzan Falls, Tarzan Pools location, this is just an example, that that property, the administrative authority falls under GWA, and forestry has our longest stretch of management work on this property. So this is a good example of what the work can be, that it's land, Cotal Conservation Reserve, a GWA administrative holding. We are continuing to do reforestation work to protect and ensure the integrity of the water resources and forest resources. So if one day Cotal is pulled upon for, to draw water, we haven't compromised the location. And if I may add, like, when you look at the percentage of land or the total totality of land across the island, and you hear something like 1,200 and some acres already converted into development, I want to throw another number out there. It's 4.6% of total land area across the island that burns on an annual average, that blows all other jurisdictions across the nation right out of the water. That's 8,000-plus acres of land. And so looking at the management resources, the limits, limitations that we have locally, and the potential for big funding, well, I say big because anything more than my $60,000 fire grant is big. And so looking at alternative funding opportunities to invest on these properties to continue to do these reforestation projects, or maybe it isn't reforestation, it's just some kind of enhancement to protect the site, this opens the door for us to be able to pitch for those grants and bring funding in to do work on lands that we have administrative authority to be able to do work. And we know that. It just protects the integrity, the intent of the project and the site for however long we have it for this purpose.
So regarding the Cotal Forest, is it only, is it partially owned by Department of Agriculture and GWA, or who is the landowner for that area?
Thank you, Senator, for that question. Actually, in previous meetings and this, in speaking with Department of Land Management Director Joe Joseph Borja, in doing some research with certain properties on the island of Guam, he referred to it all the way back even prior to the Spanish occupation of Guam, it was referred to as the monte sin dueño, which is mountain with no owner. Basically, even our ancestors viewed these pieces of land as having zero value. There was no spring waters, there was, it was usually clay or what we see now as the badlands where you couldn't do any agricultural. At some point, I did bring up in the past that the Guam Department of Agriculture should file some type of a claim to these properties. And part of the reason why I'm recommending that we possibly do this is, for instance, because it was even during Spanish times, land with no owner, the assumed owner of this property is the sovereign, which is the United States government. So what we're seeing potentially could happen in the future is companies like Missile Defense Agency could come in and say, well, this is, has no clear title to anybody during Spanish occupation, nor has there been any clear title during American occupation, this here for this land actually does belong to the United States government. In the interest of our local people and our, our local lands, I think at this point, because Department of Agriculture has been maintaining, for instance, Cotal for the last forty-plus years, it's clear that we've been the maintain, you know, the administrative authority at Cotal. I don't see any opposition, or I, I don't see any challenge to us saying, let's take title to this piece of property so that if, you know, somewhere down the road, someone such as a sovereign comes in and says, I want to plant a missile defense right on this property, there goes forty years of work down the drain. So there are hundreds of acres of land that have no clear title, and herefore belong, therefore belongs to the sovereign, which is the United States government. I've expressed it to the team, it's just a matter now of, with the Forest System Plan, identifying after the assessment for the forest system, the forest coverage here on the island of Guam, at some point, as long as there is access for the Department of Agriculture to build new habitats, re reclaim some of these lands that have been eroded and so on and so forth, I think the door is open for our agency to be able to lay claim to some of these properties for the protection of the island of Guam itself. Thank you.
Definitely may be a form of process you want to address because you do have adjacent land, private landowners, and you also have, you know, the military with the Fena area down there that expands up into the hillside, so that would obviously be a priority, would not want to see the Cotal Forest being dismantled after all the time and effort that's been put in place for it. To continue on, these questions may apply to both BSP and Department of Agriculture. How will proposals for leasing land within the forest system be handled? Will this fall under the procurement law? The plan does not clearly seem to allow for competitive leasing process. How can we ensure that the leasing of lands for activities such as hiking, camping, or commercial ventures like guided tours follows a fair, fair and transparent process? Have you determined how you're going to address that procedure? So it can be consistently implemented overall?
Can I just touch part of that?
Sure.
So, oh, I'll wait.
So if you look at page twenty five to twenty six of the plan, K, oh, if you reference page twenty five of K of the Forest System Plan submitted, there's procedures and protocol for leasing within this Forest System Plan that outlines the, the process. And it hasn't been determined about, you know, how you guys would handle things, whether they'd be competitive or not.
It was, my, my understanding was also that this would be something per site, very specific per site, because what hiking or camping rules may not apply to all pro, all areas. And so this is to, this, the, the main language in K is just to block off that this will be determined, but every project that's approached here in the Forest System Plan would have to incorporate like the, the viewpoints of the mayors, because if we're opening sites for camping, and let's say families have been used to camping on properties without permits, without permits, because some sites, they, they're just there, but this allows for the potential for that, I'd hate to say like revenue generating, but an opportunity to put some funds back into a pot for actual maintenance, safety, safety, trail maintenance, especially markers for where cellphone app, you know, hey, you can get a cellphone signal right here. That's key in, in some of our more dangerous locations. Um, but it, it had been, you know, it was discussed that it would be rules and regs and access and such would be discussed based upon when it's time to do work on that property. Like what, what are we looking at?
Well, I would, would recommend, I mean, if, of obviously different sites will be used for different purposes, but I think you're going to need to facilitate how you're going to go about that process so the public, others in the community that you're partnering with also will know what the process and procedure is, so there's fairness, whatever it may be. It may be for camping, it may be, you know, putting up a cell tower, I don't know, but I think we need to have processes in place depending on what the location requires.
Thank you, Senator, I think.
That be outlined, and you probably need to facilitate working on that a little sooner.
Yes, thank you, Senator, and I think what has, what, the reason why, part of the reason why it was left off the Forest System Plan and left somewhat general and vague was the assessment needs to take place first, and then it can be determined, you know, is there going to be a uniform rate for, like you said, leasing for cellphone towers here, there, whatever it may be. This way, they, once the assessment is done, then the standardization can, can take place immediately after that. So that'll be the first step is the entire assessment correct.
Okay, okay, well, that's, that's fair. I think we just have to note that that's obviously a concern in terms of how, what the process and procedures that are being put in place in the event there's a desire to use the property for different purposes like camping or whatever the case may be.
Yeah, and I'd like to add, it wouldn't necessarily always be Department of Agriculture's land because they'd be the management component, but not the, they wouldn't have administrative jurisdiction. So, you know, you would, if, for those agencies that have a mechanism to do the leases, it obviously would follow those processes.
But considering all the, you know, we understand that, as mentioned, that the ownership of the property will remain with the respective, be it the mayor's office or DPR, whatever the case may be, and of course, you have all these factors under a single umbrella, but, but that, that issue in terms of how do you go about the process of you're going to use that property, if you're going to apply for a permit, how do you standardize that so anyone and everyone who might be interested in participating for whatever reason will know what that is and that we have consistency? Because then, you know, that opens up the door for other things that we don't want to see. I mean, we want transparency with regards to how these properties are going to be used. With regards, is the proposed Forest System Plan and its associated inventory of lands available to the public through either the Bureau of Statistics and Plans or Department of Agriculture's website?
Yes, we have a web map available, I could provide the link after this.
So they can look up your website and get that information?
Yeah, yeah, I'll provide the link.
That's available now?
Hosted on both, hosted on both websites.
Okay, both of yours, both Department of Agriculture and also the Bureau of Planning, okay.
And it's, it should be referenced on our social media as well.
Okay.
Yeah, I have it embedded on a webpage, so I could just...
Right.
Okay, well, that's good to know. With regards to funding and management, have any funds from the federal Biden infrastructure bill been identified or allocated for the implementation of the Forest System Plan? Are there any plans to involve private contractors in the management or maintenance of the forest system?
Currently, specifically for the Forest System Plan, not at this moment.
Okay.
So do we have funding? Yes.
Okay.
But all specific projects, all in motion, waiting on procurement, but nothing specific for the Forest System Plan as of yet. But there, I may, if I may stress, there is a dot, dot, dot potential for funding.
Okay, all right. What other funding will you be looking at? Do you have any idea at this point what options of funding you may be looking at?
Definitely. So we have, I'm very excited, Urban and Community Forestry Inflation Reduction Act funding. We, the inflation, so we were already awarded, Guam was already awarded a IRA grant, Inflation Reduction Act grant, and it's through our urban and community forestry program for trades academy, tree care, tree worker trainings, which can expand to, so at the trades academy, scholarships for twenty five students a session, potentially two sessions for up to three years, fully funded, and it also supports the Department of Parks and Recreation for a program coordinator to help facilitate and facilitate the grant. It provides for competitive opportunities ranging at about two hundred and fifty to three hundred thousand dollars in competitive grants for the community, and we're just waiting to launch this. And when I talk about this with specific to the plan, it wasn't written for the Forest System Plan, but the benefits will be any of the sites that are managed, that need maintenance, that maybe these potential competitive grants, the proposals that come in, they're going to have to work with the Department of Parks and Recreation, which means they're going to have to work with the mayors in order to determine the best approaches for whatever sites they're adopting, because it's a community forestry project. So any proposal coming in, it takes pressure off of your Department of Agriculture, off of forestry, and puts training, knowledge, and elevates industry potential here on Guam to take, again, right? There's only so much we can do.
Yes.
So, so this helps, so the grant that Chief Christine is talking about here, while we, I, I, you know, move forward with the Forest System Plan, what works great is this the IRA grant. This grant is going to simultaneously assist with the development and everything that goes along with it. So it's quite different than a lot of rules, regs, mandates, laws, bills that get passed into it where it takes years to effectuate. What's great about this is with that IRA grant, we'll have students, so we're going to be, they'll be going through training, and then we're creating jobs as well along with that. And then the competitive grant opportunities for smaller companies to be able to grow and compete and provide these services. What it does, it takes a lot of that burden away from our agency altogether, and now we work more within the community as a, as a collaborative effort to make sure that the Forest System Plan is working for the, for the people of Guam.
And may I add, it's the sub, the competitive subgrants, again, are to, to, to address and support underserved communities, and it's not just for companies, it's, agencies can apply for this, nonprofits, and it's, it's our first big attempt to really infuse the community with potential to do work. You like what we do, you, you have points and viewpoints on how we do it, here's your opportunity to, to take some of that on with us here to train you and support you and guide the work. So that's trying to make our lives a little easier.
Okay, well, Speaker's inquiring, do you have any REPI, R E P I, REPI funding that you might be looking at?
We do have REPI funding. The, the Department of Agriculture Forestry Division was awarded a REPI Challenge Award, but it's for the renovation of our building. So it's, it secures the uplift of our much aged, what's known as the SETI warehouse, and so if you've come to me harvest, it's the big warehouse and then farm to tables kind of in the back corner. So it renovates the big building, it buys vehicles, supports much needed assets and supplies that we've been missing. We haven't been able to buy vehicles with our own funding, so this is an opportunity. It also gives funding for a savanna species garden, and so we've targeted Cotal for this because we're missing that, and we're forestry, so growing savanna species like sedges and grasses, not exactly our thing, but we understand the importance of the diversity of, of forests and ecosystems. And so we've prioritized putting savanna species on the map for us to do more work. But we also have America the Beautiful Challenge money, and that was another big infusion to hire potentially twelve new employees for forestry. And then we have more NIFLIF money coming in from Fish and Wildlife Service and all the joint partners in D O D to, again, support more monitoring work, because we're doing all this work and there's just not enough of us to do actual monitoring of the successes. So, so yes, there's bill money, IRA money, cooperative fire assistance, cooperative fire guidance, the technical support. Your forestry team has brought in a considerable amount of new funds, and again, when I say considerable, we're looking at a pot of not very much traditionally, and we defend for ourselves for quite a bit, and so this is giving us a bit of a recharge, and, yeah.
Okay, I appreciate that. What is the role of the State Forest Stewardship Coordinating Committee under sixteen U S C section two one one three? It's on page fifteen of the system plan.
Right.
Is it governing at all, or is it just an advise, or does it just have an advisory capacity?
It's an advisory capacity. So the forest, every program in the Forestry and Soil Resources Division is required to have a committee and advisory councils, I barely, you know, we, they're just structured so that we have more partners, the diversity of our partnerships represented, so that when we plan for these big grants and these narratives, we know what the master plan, the intent was for that property, but what can we do to enhance that space while we have a window to do so? And it coordinates our efforts so that, we got a joint chief's landscape scale restoration grant, that was a first for Guam too, and that required USDA Forest Service and N R C S to compete. We were awarded our funds for Guam, and we have soil and water districts tied in there. I mean, it's, so the committees are very much, especially stewardship, to ensure that the representatives from Farmers Co-op, Soil and Water Districts, your agencies, your mayors. So it gets a bit cumbersome in looking for space to meet, so our fire meeting was, is an example of that, that's coming up next month.
Okay, well, it's good to know you have all that are involved. For all panelists who have landed, proposing inventory with regards to transfer, because so far you mentioned they will maintain ownership, there's no transfer of the actual property title, you're simply addressing the administrative oversight of, of the land.
Correct.
But the Speaker's asking the question, do you support the transfer of these properties to the jurisdiction of Department of Agriculture mayor in terms of the jurisdiction of the property, not the actual property title, but the jurisdiction to allow them to be able to pursue the grants that they have the opportunity to do if they have control of that?
I'll only speak for PD property.
Sure, yes.
Yes.
Okay. Is this something that Department of Agriculture and Bureau of Planning would have the opportunity to come before the mayor's council maybe and provide more, I think it'd be helpful to meet and provide more information and be able to respond to any questions your other mayors may have, just to get more familiarity?
I know it's additional work, but I, I would appreciate it. I think I, my colleagues will probably disagree with me in, in saying that, well, here's why. You talk, you ask them a question, or you ask them questions about revenue generating activities and regulation and compliance, I'm all for it, but I don't have the capacity. I don't have the capacity to monitor, I don't have the capacity to maintain any of that. And if, if we're going to be good partners, utilize, utilizing the property within the village and still maintaining a relationship, but having them who, who have all the money more than we do and the manpower, I'm, I'm fine with it, I really am. Again, the difficulty is with other villages and other properties, they have their own desired uses of the property, but for specifically in PD, the two pieces, two parcels that are listed, I have absolutely no problem handing over the jurisdiction to them and working with them to utilize the property.
Okay, I appreciate that input, and then certainly, as I mentioned, maybe at the appropriate time, seeing how this bill moves forward here, you know, to have them come and meet with the mayors as well, the mayor's council, to provide a presentation then as well, hear any questions or concerns your fellow mayors may have, so that it's not a surprise, we don't impose something and everyone's going, oh, wait a minute, what's going on here, you know?
And I'm going to just say, that's why I thank you for inviting us or for informing us of this, because it's one of those instances where we, you know, we're involved, our names are not on it, but we're involved, and we don't want to be, you know, at the last minute, you know, thrown all of this and then wondering why Christine, you know, is at our door and we're yelling at, bro. But, I mean, I know, no, no, they're, they're, they've been very good, honestly, they have been, and so that's why I'm, I'm actually okay with that for PD. But thank you, Senator, for mentioning it. I do believe that it would be a good idea to have the agriculture and maybe even BSP at the mayor's council, but being very specific, right, with the properties that they might actually, that's part of the plan, and communicating with the mayors.
Well, and even if the property is under their respective jurisdiction of the other government agencies, I'm sure you're going to want to be aware, informed of what activities are there. I think that's how you can collectively ensure a good partnership and then even more support at the village level for these programs. And certainly if you're able to bring more money in to help facilitate, I think as our mayor of PD is related, that certainly would be welcomed. With regards, would you support the transfer with agreed upon terms through an MOA? Would that be the mechanism, would that be an agreeable mechanism to work out these arrangements, so that you know what their responsibilities are and what your engagement is as well?
I would agree, and especially with Pedro Santos Park, I think I'm still amazed at the amount of rent they pay to the government of Guam. And I looked that up because I wanted to know who owned the property, was it really the PD Mayor's office, or was it CLTC? And CLTC receives, if I'm not wrong, only $5,000 a year for that easement, and they take up a good chunk of that property. So, yeah, I believe that all of that needs to be revisited, and I'm not asking for the money, but I think the government needs to be paid more.
Okay, well, those are things certainly I think we can put on the table. Are there any commercial leases currently on properties identified for inclusion in the forest system? What is your understanding of what will happen to these leases and associated revenue if the jurisdiction is transferred to the Department of Agriculture? I think they rolled the volleyball down to your side, Bureau of Planning.
We're setting to Matt at this point.
Well, we're not actually proposing to transfer any land, or, you know what I mean, or impact any easements, it's really about, you mean, the assumption is, the baseline is existing use. So it wouldn't like, you know, retroactively impact any existing use of these properties.
But I think the question's regarding specific, any specific leases that might already be on the property, and any revenue that comes in as a result of it. Are you aware of any of the properties that currently are under the plan, that have existing leases that would be affected by this at all?
I actually need to do my, I can't say it absolutely, but we could figure it out, because, you know, easements are sometimes the ones that you have to, you know, you have to look for, especially for utilities or for telecommunications, like the AT&amp;T one that was just leased out. I think there's a portion of that that runs through one of the properties.
Well, I think it'd be good to maybe, I know it's going to require a little effort, but it would be good to go back and verify, so that even if this bill comes up for deliberation, it would be helpful to have that information, also for your own inventory, so you know, collectively know. I think it'd be helpful to have that information. Senator Tello, do you have any questions or comments at this point?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you so much for being here this afternoon. It is quite lengthy, the act itself, the plan, I'm sorry, the plan, and I'm just really taken back by all the inventory here. And based on this, this is what you are recognizing as the inventory to be under your management, not so much ownership, but just management, correct?
Correct.
Okay. The Guam Forestry Legacy Act of 2012 was established to, for you to create your system plan, which you're done. It's 12 years later, and we are here in front of us now addressing it, when the law said you had within 90 days to do that. It also allowed you to utilize any kind of funding, and it was, that was one of my questions that the Speaker asked. So even in formulating this system plan, you didn't need any funding whatsoever to do so. It did, the act, the Legacy Act, Guam Forestry, did allow you spending ability or utilizing, but you didn't use any funds to create this plan?
Use some of our federal program money, where the activity was consistent with both the grant or the program, such as our coastal management program.
How much funding did you utilize from your grant? You guys are both from the same BSP, right?
Yeah, like, you know. Yeah, so we had a contractor for, to do some of the GIS, to, so basically, if you look at the maps, like to create these ones. So, you know, we worked with Land Management to get all the recorded documents and the lots, but to have something as close to COGO in terms of the property area, those are created by our contractor that was already contracted to provide GIS support to the Bureau.
So how much funding did you utilize for this project?
We also had...
Oh, turn on your mic? Yeah, there.
It was at meetings and summits that were held at...
Hyatt.
A couple venues, which we, I believe we probably spent around $10,000 per meeting.
How about Department of Agriculture? Any funding that you used at all to create this system plan?
It would just be personnel, like, so my time going to meetings, we're locally funded, the forestry staff. And so things like having the Forest System Summit that BSP coordinated for this event to try and get, raise awareness, many partners came to the table for that one. So just the funds and that, and then for Maria or whoever was contracted, right, for the maps, but...
Okay. And the Legacy Act, the Forest Legacy Act also required you to work very closely with Department of Land Management.
Yeah.
I was wondering if, do we have any testimony from Department of Land Management? Because that was the first person that, or first agency that was stated in this act of 2012 to utilize, and I'm surprised that they're not here to justify these properties and concur, unless you have a testimony from them? Did anybody bring one?
I don't have a testimony from them, but Director Borja, from the very, very first meeting workshop where we talked about this, and I say very first, when it was resurrected again, he was rapid fire throwing lots at us, this one, this one, add this one, this one, you know? And so DLM, Department of Land Management, has been part of this process from the very beginning, and they're in the communique, you know, when you, if not in this one...
I'm just surprised that they're not here today. I mean, we have everybody else that's recognized in this act to be here, so, you know, I'll ask the community chair if they can also get the testimony from Department of Land Management to concur with this inventory, it's very important. Also in the act of, yes, sir?
Yeah, so we did work closely, especially with their land administrator to, because, you know, every single property was mapped to the, you know, even the administrative jurisdiction, so whether it be public law, you know, where did it originate from as a grantee, what's the existing land use that applies to this, whether it's the, you know, the Conservation and Parks Master Plan or other plan, you know, such plans to where there's existing conditions and land use policies associated with them. So there was a really, like, you know, detailed back and forth with each line item in terms of whether this would be compatible or even, you know, legal for us to be able to apply or, you know, include them in the inventory. So there was definitely a verification, they provided the listing, and we even mapped all of the documents, like the land records with the land. So if you look at each property, it'll have a reference number, which will tie you to all the documents for those recordings as well.
It'd be very helpful to attach to as well, so that colleagues who are not here, they at least have this testimony and to show how well they did. So, well, I'll ask the chair to also bring, and it's ironic, you know, that the mayor's here, and during that time in 2012, when they created this Guam Forestry Legacy Act of 2012, that they incorporated everybody but the mayor's office in here. In fact, they had even nonprofit organizations to have an MOU between, you know, other than, you know, Department of Energy, Guam Community College, you know, EPA, all those other areas, Department of Parks and Rec. But they failed to incorporate the mayor's, you know, council on this, which should have played a big part. So I think the recommendation...
We presented to the mayor's council last, was it last year? Yeah.
Yeah, well, the MOU is what I'm talking about, you know, to be able to incorporate them in the MOU, you have other areas, I mean, other agencies and even the nonprofit organizations to go into an MOU, so I think the same should apply for the mayor's council. It's not here in the act, the 2012 act, so my recommendation is that it be incorporated into the legislation somehow to incorporate the mayor's council, so they are at the table as well. So I didn't see it, I tried to scan through it as soon as a mayor...
Part of our testimony was the fact that it kind of opens it up to allow for those memorandum of agreements between all the relevant parties, right? So that was part of our, you know, that was in our testimony that...
Relevant parties, so it gives a broader perspective. Here's my situation with that, you know? When you start putting these words in there, it's going to start a fight, you know? I'd rather make things really clear and straight to the point that, yes, you have a seat at the table, not like take a guess, or like, you know, oh, it's broad to allow anyone. I think it's always best to name them, you know? That way, there's no issues or whether, a guessing game, you know, that they aren't part of it. So I'm sure the Speaker, you know, is probably going to incorporate this somewhere. I know this is a, your plan, the system plan, but I kept trying to look in here to see if I can find anything, but I didn't see it.
May I ask, I'm so sorry, I may have misunderstood something. Is there an MOU for which part are we, because here's where I'm at. This is irritating me, sorry. As far as like our projects, so our current grants that are, that are being our subawards and subgrants that are opening up to the community, we're recognizing new groups that we honestly thought we weren't going to have a very big pool of applicants for a subgrant to NGOs. We really didn't think, I thought we'd see Island Girl Power and that'd be it. And the beauty of the subawards was that we offered workshops to train new groups, new people to come out and compete for money. So when we start looking at, this is why I hesitate, when we look at something that says this is an MOU, I'm asking like, for what specific part? Because are we already going to roll out potential partners that we haven't even made yet? So I think this was more like, I needed clarification on the question regarding a memorandum?
I think that definitely...
If we're working specific projects, if we're working specific sites?
Yeah, if I can interject, I think what would be helpful, and I think, and I appreciate our mayor of PD being here, it would be good, even of course, you're going to have these individual independent agreements of what you need to do, depending on these different projects, where they're located, but I think it would be very good conduit to have that engagement with the mayor, so that they're aware. If we know something's going to be happening, for example, in the village of PD, other than that courtesy's extended to the mayor of PD, you know, to contact Mayor Alig and say Mayor Alig, and follow up to this particular property, this is the project, this is what is being intended or planned upon. So that's what Senator Tello means, that they're at the table, that they're engaged, that they're aware, so that you really have more partnership with the mayors, and the mayors have a more partnership with you. Rather, they're within their village and these things are happening and they have no idea, or their residents are going to be asking them questions, and they have, then that creates, you know, unnecessary angst that nobody needs to be engaged with. So I think that the fact that the mayor is here providing, you know, his input today, I think is a very good thing, and that he's open to what you are all proposing to do. But historically, that's never been the case, you know? They find out after the fact, and then it creates maybe unnecessary problems, and so I think that's what Senators...
Yeah, I appreciate the clarification, maybe it's my cold, I'm not sure.
No worries. Let me give you another example. Let's say, for instance, there's an area where it's, you know, it's always been under the care of the mayor's office for a certain property or park or area, and all of a sudden, Department of Agriculture realizes that, well, one, there's probably an endangered species or endangered, whether it's, you know, green or live, that they come in right away without the collab, without working with the mayor that owns that or in that village, and saying, okay, we have jurisdiction over this, and we are going to taper this off, and you can no longer, you, public can no longer get into this area because we're trying to save this particular endangered species. Now, like anything, it's going to take some time first to identify what it is, and is it really that bad, or can we move that endangered species to another location to thrive in another area to allow the park to continue to be open? You know, things like that are so important to keep engaged, and everybody knows where they're sitting at the table, and nobody's stepping on each other's toes. So that can, I see, could be a potential issue. That can be a fight back and forth, you know, where, you know, we see this in development too, you know, when you saw the snails that were an issue in building, and whether they can lift it, move it to somewhere else. So that's why I think it's very important that it is in writing, you know, as you're trying to get this plan secure and through, that it incorporates the mayors with a huge amount of collaboration, you know, on both sides. So that's, I appreciate Senator Brown kind of clearing that up for me too, you know, because I think she's, she feels the same way, we're very concerned. Did you want to say something, Mr. Santos?
Yeah, so I was just going to speak towards the endemic endangered, you know, there's the HCP that's pretty much in its final draft, and that's going to address a lot of those things. That plan's actually going to be piggybacking off a lot of the land, or, you know, some of the properties that have been identified through the Forest System Plan inventory. But, yeah, that's a whole, and also that's a different agricultural division as well.
This particular plan and system, I think was supposed to go through some kind of, you know, well, it's almost like the AAA, where you had the community come out and speak on it, on this plan. Did it go through that process?
Yeah, June 20th, we had an open, a public hearing that was hosted at the Hyatt.
And it was notified for the, for the public, and all stakeholders were in...
Are we referring, sorry, because two things, one more thing popped up. It was the Habitat Conservation Plan, which is what would be, that conversation on species, endemic species or endangered species, and mitigation of species, that would be covered under a Habitat Conservation Plan, not this plan?
Right, I'm talking about the Guam Forest System Plan, the rules and regulations that we are, in front of us, that we need to approve.
Yeah.
That's the only one I'm talking about, because it goes through a AAA process, correct?
And it did, and it, there was...
And how many meetings did you have in the public?
We had one meeting in Sinahania.
With these rules and regs that you had?
Well, with this document.
Yeah, this system plan, that's the one we're trying to approve here.
We've had two, two public meetings, one in Sinahania, and then we had the workshop that was open. And so any feedback, testimonies, anything that came from that.
And this invitation was sent out to all those involved, you know, because it says in the act, the 2012 act, those other areas, agencies, they were all notified?
Followed the process, followed the process and was published, and we went forward even more and blasted it across our social media and listservs.
Okay.
Yeah, that's why it was kind of, it was kicked back actually, because, you know, we needed to do it, because this was initially submitted, and then we, you know, were made aware that the AAA applied, or the AAL applied, and we went back to be compliant.
Okay, so you cross your Ts and dot your Is when it comes to the process of the AAA, correct?
Yes.
Okay, I appreciate that. So, yeah, I kind of gave that example of jurisdiction, you know, in the situation where you have to close something off for its protection, and then making sure that those who are at the table are there to have their, the ability for them to put their two cents in, you know, in all aspect of the word. So other than that, I will continue to read this, it's quite a bit of an inventory, it's a huge inventory, but it's something we need to do, the protecting of our island and its resources, its natural resources. I mean, I've been one of the biggest advocate, you know, when it comes to our natural resources, to make sure that we don't overdevelop, and most especially, we find the ability to sustain ourself as an island, and that happens when we protect our natural resources. So I thank you, Madam Chair, for the opportunity to speak, and again, I thank you for being here.
Thank you very much, Senator Tello. I do want to ask with these areas, because I know a number of years ago, there were conservation areas that were put up throughout the island, and I know one of them that were referenced is actually up there, up in Mingilo, next to the quarry. And the concern has always been raised, is how do we address enforcement? Because we do have, we see it every day, we see individuals going into property that they don't own, and they are squatting there or maybe using the property for other purposes. or maybe using the property for other purposes. And if they're not properly patrolled and inspected on a regular basis, we don't know what they're doing. They may be doing something that may be damaging the intent of why this conservation area was set aside in the first place. So how, if at all, has Department of Agriculture been able to address enforcement and even putting this plan in place? I mean, we can put this and have it on paper and have it on the maps, but if in actual practice, these areas are not being protected, because I mean, having a quarry that literally is excavating, is not going to protect any birds or bats or anything in a tree next to it if they are, you know, and I'm not saying they are, but if they're right adjacent to a conservation area, that's a big contrast. I mean, that doesn't create a viable habitat. So how, how if at all have you or how moving forward will this plan in any way help facilitate the actual, you know, protection of these areas by physical presence? How do we, or how are you looking, have you addressed it or how will you be addressing it?
So a couple of things, Senator, thank you for that, you know, for bringing that up. Within the agency, there is a couple of things that are taking place right now. There, what's going through in the process right now is the addition of 15 additional conservation officers that will be added to the fleet of the existing staff. On top of that, with the Forest System Plan and the additional personnel that is going to be brought in through the Forestry Division, like Chief Christine said, the additional 12 bodies. And then on top of that as well, with the post-certification of her foresters and our proposed citation fees. So we want to be able to give them the ability to write citations for offenders, and that's going to be for everything across the board, illegal dumping, illegal tree trimming, pruning, whatever it may be. Chief Christine has been working with us to identify a process by which even her team is going to be able to, to write citations on the spot for all these illegal activities. So with the influx of the additional conservation officers that will be out on patrol, the influx of the vehicles and the manpower that she has as well, to include the future awards to these sub-awards out in the public, they're all going to receive the same training that a lot of her staff will be receiving. So we'll have a lot more eyes and ears out in the public. In two years' time, I'm going to say we're probably going to have four times, maybe five times the amount of eyes and ears out in the public, looking at all these different properties. To add to that, it's the continued effort within the school systems with their outreach to educate the kids in middle school, high school, to know and understand we only have one island. And if I may, I was looking at the numbers, so since the Legacy Act was passed 2012, that act, in the last 10 years, just in the loss of agricultural land, to be, to be very clear, it's 3.7% of lands have been converted over and those are, I mean, that's a huge chunk that has been changed over. So if we continue to go at that rate, you know, 10 years, we're going to lose another 4% or whatever it may be. And then you have the continued buildup that's taking place as well, that's going to accelerate obviously already a lot of loss of forestry land there. So the manpower is coming. We, we are soon to start the apprenticeship program with the conservation officers and then the growth, again, like we said, with the Forestry Division. And hopefully to deter a lot of those illegal activities, the conservation officers and the foresters, the team here will be able to give those citations. And hopefully that will deter a lot of the illegal activities, tree trimming, clearing of land without permitting and all that stuff. So, thank you.
The reason I bring this up is because I don't think we've quite arrived at a level of our community that we realize the seriousness of this. We really have not. That's also an issue with regards to the prosecution of these cases and certainly one of the reasons that we were supportive of getting the citation process in place, because prior, you didn't have that opportunity. And then these cases actually required to go through the court and we were not seeing much activity and then they were released and they, they felt no consequence. And there's a lot of illegal activity happening on the island that's also drug-related, where people are actually using and abusing our natural resources to transfer that and exchange it into cash, so they can buy drugs and help facilitate that process as well, again, further damaging our natural resources. I mean, we hear a lot more these days of enforcement with regards to our marine preserves, which I appreciate, because I spearheaded the creation of those marine preserves almost 30 years ago. But we also with regards to terrestrial, need to have that same degree of importance and urgency and also recognizing, getting that information out in our community so that respect is also there. Because I, I don't see it, there's still a tendency now to think that natural resources are secondary. And of course, we have other serious crimes that happen in our community, we recognize that, and that's unfortunate. But we also want to put the message out that, that there's consequence if you damage our natural resources, our plants, our animal life. Because as you mentioned, as the years go on, there's going to be a bigger pressure and depletion of those resources if we don't make a good earnest effort now to recognize it, identify it, and definitely put the enforcement and awareness in there to protect those resources. They should not be considered at the end of the line. And that historically, at least in my lifetime, is how these things have been looked upon. And I think we need to be unfortunately sometimes, because it's a very me, all about me these days, generation that we're not getting that level of sensitivity to protect these resources and also recognize there should be consequence to, if, if you harm them.
That recognition and identify, that's, we do have in forestry, our citizen science efforts, so citizen science programs, like our citi, why do I keep putting it back on? Our Citizen Forester Program, the program was started a couple of years ago and it was an effort to raise awareness. Because if we're going to start talking, you know, the citation program, the post-certification of our team members, that's still, it's going to take some time before we get there. But in the interim, what we are building is the educational platforms that inform, educate, provide access. And that's access to the information, to the resource managers, access to join us in these events to be part of a solution. And these aren't pie in the sky dreams anymore, right? This is, this is, the money is there backing it and we have done the work now for a couple of years. So it's just building that education and finding more NGOs, more organizations willing to work with our division and our department, so that citizen science, citizen policing becomes the next step to all of this. And our current stipend workers in Moleso down south, they're the first ones that, you know, when it came to stipend workers, when we started this in 2018, our stipend workers were selected from the mayor's offices and these were individuals who were like second chance, third chance, you're getting kicked off the island at this point. And to sit with these individuals and train them to do the work we've asked them to do, it was something to hear them share their stories and be one of the first ones to report, hey, there's a fire on the plantation. And they're feeling it because they, they threw up, they sweated, they did the work. And so we're seeing this recruitment. And Palau has a really great success rate. We're talking years and years of Micronita Challenge work, where they put, they empowered their poachers with the policing. And we're, we're moving towards that. We are bringing in stipend, stipend workers, we're bringing in more opportunities for stipend, and we're building our citizen science opportunities. And so the sub-grants become that next step and there's training for trades, which is the next step. And so we're still always forward-thinking on how to, again, provide support for our mayors and the agencies that are underfunded, understaffed, because we're very much underfunded, understaffed. So how do we do this? Leverage wherever we can. So working with these partners face to face, what do you need, what, what's your vision here? That's the only way we can move forward. And then building those really great relationships with the private landowners that lock our properties. Our government parcels down south are landlocked by private lands. So when we talk about collaboration and reaching out and coordinating, we are knocking on doors. I spent the early part of my career knocking on doors, making relationships so we can have access to our government parcels. So Mayor, you bet, you're, the council's going to be on documents for agreements. I apologize if something wasn't in there that, that, you know, but it's, it's never been a, you've always been the first call.
Well, you know, I'm happy to hear that, because I know our mayors know those individuals in their community that not everybody needs a college degree or wants one. But there are those in our, our community that may not have a job, but may have the interest and the energy and certainly being, providing the training and, and being able to employ them, as you mentioned, to maybe be our first responders out there is a plus, I know, for the mayors as well. So I'm happy to hear that. That, that actually addresses a mutual concern and benefit, mutual benefit that can happen as a result of that. Do any of you, Mayor, do you have any closing comments you want to make before we wrap up? I certainly will extend it to agriculture and Bureau Planning as well.
I do want to just say, I want to recognize the work that we've done, that we have done, Mayor's Council with, with Christine and with the Department of Agriculture. And I want to say that I am very hopeful that, that the partnership will continue. And so both of you, your concerns, I think, enumerating the Mayor's Council in this plan and, you know, Matt, they did came, they did come to the, to the Mayor's Council, but as you know, we kind of have to go individual, right? Village by village to say, hey, this is how, this is impacting your village, this is impacting your property or the property that you, you, you have jurisdiction over. And so I, I know that I've informed them, but I, I just have to do the extra step and get to them individually. So I do appreciate you inviting me here, the Mayor's Council, to this public hearing. And I appreciate the partnership that we have with agriculture and with BSP and look forward to continued partnership. Thank you.
And thank you very much, Mayor Alec, for taking your time this afternoon to come and provide your testimony to the committee. Does Department of Agriculture, do you have any other closing comments you'd like to make on this, on this bill?
Thank you very much for the opportunity. I think what you can expect from us is to make this plan work for the people of Guam. And we'll continue to push forward to make sure we collaborate with everybody and everybody's included with the development and the process that we move forward with. So thank you for allowing us to give our testimony today.
And thank you also for coming here this afternoon and providing your testimony responding to our questions. Bureau of Planning and Statistics, do you have any closing comments or any other things you would like to add with regards to this plan?
Nothing for me, thank you.
I have tremendous difficulty reading this name. Sorry, you're going to have to print it out for me, I can't read the writing, I apologize.
I'm sorry, Madam Chair, may I ask the lead?
Yes, please, thank you. Maybe Elsie can replace, maybe you can come up and formally state your name, I apologize, I'm not able to read the writing. And you just made it in the nick of time?
Half a day, my name is Elson de Mullenada. I work at the University of Guam Center for Island Sustainability.
Okay. And you wanted to provide any testimony with regards to this bill, 363?
So I'm in favor of the bill and I work closely with the Department of Agriculture on developing the Guam Habitat Conservation Plan, which, you know, the Forest System Plan would be very useful for that plan in regards to conservation, because we have a lot of endangered plants and animals that, you know, with development, might be affected. And the Forest System Plan could be useful in our conservation strategy, which really is looking for to, to establish a reserve network for the Guam Habitat Conservation Plan. And since conservation is an important part of the Forest System Plan, that, that would fit really well with that plan. And the Department of Agriculture is going to execute Guam HEP, so it would be, yeah.
Okay, well, wonderful. It's also nice to know the University of Guam is also a partner and engaged. There was, once upon a time, I was doing what you guys were doing, I actually enjoyed it. One of the highlights of my, my career in, in working with the university and with Conservation and Department of Agriculture, Bureau of Planning, that I always wanted to be the director of, but never got the opportunity to do so. Do you have any other comments you'd like to make or are you comfortable with your statement?
Some of these areas have like really high-quality limestone forests where we only have a few, you know, we have a few acres left of. And once that limestone disappears from our island, we, we don't have a place for these plants and animals anymore. And we have about 64 endemic plant species that, that are, just occur on Guam and the Mariana's and nowhere else in the world. And of those 64, there's actually 15 listed on the endangered species list. So it's kind of a part of our biocultural heritage to preserve these species for future generations. And I think this, this Forest System Plan can really play an important role in preserving these plants and animals and especially their habitats for future generations and, and those, those limestone forests, especially the Pinnacle Karen Forest are really important for that.
Do we, if I can ask, Department of Ag, do we have areas for the limestone forests that are being set aside?
We do have sections that are, that are included in the Forest System Plan. And one of our active sites right now, where we're having biological work done, is the Taguan site, best known as just a general landmark, the Thousand Steps Trail Area.
Yes. Well, it's good to hear, because I know things like the raceway took up tremendous amount of parts. I mean, I understand the support and for those that have the interest in the raceway, but it did destroy a significant amount of our limestone area. And a lot of people don't realize the significance of that or even how those forests are maximized or the ability of the plant life and animal life that's sustained there are able to do so. So it's good to hear. I recall when we actually were permitting, when I was at Guam EPA, the Mangilo Golf Course, there were strand areas there of the limestone forest. If you recall, I might not, you know, Mr. Randy Sablon, of course, he now works on the other side of the fence, but still for Guam. You know, and actually, one of the negotiated parts of permitting that process, that project was to set aside areas there in the Mangilo Golf Course to preserve some of them. Those may be things that can also be looked at in other private properties, because once they're destroyed, they will never be rebuilt in our lifetime. We physically cannot do that. We cannot replicate what nature has already done. So where we can, and also be mindful in permitting, if those areas certainly can be saved, more the reason to do so. Okay. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for coming down and providing your testimony. I'm glad you were able to make it in time. If we have no further comment, in closing, I would like to emphasize the importance of ensuring that the jurisdictional language in this bill remains clear and consistent with the original intent of the Guam Forestry Legacy Act, without infringing on the authority of the other agencies or the people of Guam who may have other vested interests in those properties or easements. The goal of this bill is to enhance the conservation and management of Guam's forests while ensuring fair land use practices. There being no additional individuals to present further testimony, this committee will consider Bill Number 363-37COR as duly heard. The committee will remain open for the submission of additional written testimony for the next five working days following this hearing Monday, November 4th, 2024. Testimony can be sent via email to Senator TurlaheGuam@gmail.com or hand-delivered to her office here at the Guam Congress Building or hand-delivered to her office, yes, delivered it, repeated twice, to the Guam Congress Building. The time is now 3:30, 3 PM. And with that, we will now conclude the hearing on this bill. Thank you to all of you for coming and your engagement and participation. Certainly thank you as well to Senator Tello Tydeley, my partner in crime, how appropriate that we're here for this particular bill today. So thank you. With that, we will conclude the hearing. Thank you.